Who's your second on there?
This time I'll call the Garden Grove Housing Authority meeting to order. Could the secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Beckless.
Present.
Commissioner Broadwater.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Present.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Here.
Vice Chair Fan.
Here.
Chair Beard.
Here.
And Commissioner Nguyen is absent.
Okay, with that, oral communications related to the housing authority, seeing none. Number two is the consent items, which would be the status report. Is there a report to be given?
Not on the consent item.
Okay. Entertainer motion?
I move the issue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Motion received, six yes votes.
Okay, oh, now, public hearings, Garden Grove Housing Authority, the annual plan. Can we have a report, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have a staff report, and I'd like Danny to make that for you.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. The item before you tonight, it's the fiscal year 2013 annual plan. The Housing Authority is required to submit this plan to the Department of Housing and Urban Development prior to April 17th. In 2012, the Garden Grove Housing Authority received a score of 100 out of a possible 100 points, which qualifies the Authority as a high-performing agency. As a high-performing agency, the Authority is only required to complete an abbreviated format of the annual plan. A residential advisory board comprised of six tenant participants of the Housing Choice Voucher Program has reviewed the plan, and the comments are attached. The public hearing has been properly noticed on January 3rd and the 10th. It is recommended that the Housing Authority Commission conduct the public hearing and adopt the 2013 annual plan. That concludes my report, and I'm available for questions.
Any questions, the staff? Seeing none, this is a public hearing, we'll open the public hearing, all those who wish to speak on this matter. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Entertain motion? Call for the vote?
Motion received, six yes votes.
No items for consideration, matters from the commission? Staff, seeing none, move to adjournment. Thank you very much.
See you.
At this time, we'll call together the Garden Grove City Council. Will you please call roll, Ms. Pomoy?
Councilmember Beard. Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Fan.
Here.
Mayor Broadwater.
Here.
Mayor Protem Nguyen is absent.
Let's say we're a pledge allegiance and invocation, invocation and pledge allegiance.
Please join me in prayers and prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear Lord, we ask for your presence over this council meeting. We ask that you bestow your blessings and wisdom to everyone present here. May your hand guide the discussions and the decision made here this evening for the benefit of all in our Garden Grove community. Amen.
Please follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's my understanding that we have a community spotlight tonight?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor, and I would like to ask Kingsley Okorike to make the presentation for you.
Thank you, Madam Susan Emre. This evening, the City of Garden Grove City Council is pleased to acknowledge 10 outstanding local students selected as ambassadors to represent the City of Garden Grove in the 23rd Annual Sister City Exchange Program with Annyang, South Korea. For 23 years, Garden Grove Sister City Association has maintained a special appreciation and deep ties with Annyang, South Korea. Through the exchange program, Garden Grove's youth have the special opportunity to experience the Korean culture firsthand. They're taking the country's beautiful sights and tastes, but more importantly, their hospitality. The students, along with their chaperones, Monica Cabrerio and Shanna McDonough will serve as Garden Grove's goodwill ambassadors. They will be leaving on April 4th and returning on April 13th. During their time there, they will be staying with Korean families who have graciously opened their homes and hearts to host the students and their chaperones. At this time, I would like to call forward and introduce each of the students present here tonight. I ask that each of you please stay up front after being called, so a group photo can be taken at the end. Would Alex Beard, please come forward? Alex is a senior at Pacific High School, and is an avid swimmer, not only with his swim team, but also with the Seal Beach Swim Club. He has a very warm personality, and is quick to make people laugh. His goal in life, he indicated, is to be an actor, a comedian, and to travel to space. Next, I have Carmen Cabrera. Please come forward. Carmen is a junior at Los Amigos High School. She is the avid club treasurer and a peer educator at Planned Parenthood. She wants to major in public relations and minor in international business. Carmen hopes to learn more about the South Korean culture, history, and economy, beginning with this trip. And next, we have Sean Curtis, a junior at Garden Grove High School. Sean has been looking forward to joining the Sister City Association for a long time. During his free time, Sean learns Korean and studies their culture. His goals are to major in linguistics and take up a career as a translator. Next, we have Yanni Gavodon, also a junior at Garden Grove High School. Yanni is an AP Psychology Collega—oh, she's in AP Psychology, Collega, and National Honor Society. She's the vice president of the Catalyst Club and a member of Meka—Mecha, Meka?
Meka.
Meka, alright, and the Bible Club. She wants to major in psychology, focusing on marriage counseling, and during her free time, she volunteers at a shelter for domestic violence. She hopes to make lasting connections and unforgettable memories during this trip. Next, I have Eric Juarez. Please come forward. Eric is a senior at Boza Grande High School. He is the president of Project Encore and senior class office. He's a member of ASB, the key club, and a student representative to the Garden Grove Unified School District Board of Education. In taking this trip, he hopes to further expand his knowledge of Korea and the world. Next, I have Stefania Luna from Santiago High School. Stefania is a senior and the Spanish Club Treasurer at Santiago. She plans to attend Stanford University or UC Santa Barbara, where she intends to major in chemistry and sociology. During her free time, she volunteers at her community center. Next, I have Katie Farm. Please come forward. Katie is a junior at Garden Grove High School. She's the yearbook editor-in-chief, president of the Dream Builders Club, and vice president of the Catalyst Club. Growing up near Korean community, Katie has only had a glimpse of what she will experience in Korea, and is thankful for this wonderful opportunity. Next, we have Angel Reyes. Angel is a senior at Santiago High School. Angel is a member of the key club and has been in basketball since freshman. He hopes to attend either UC Santa Barbara or UC San Diego, where he will study to become a high school teacher or a principal. Last but not the least, we have Lauren Youngerman, a senior at Pacific High School. Lauren is the president of show choir and a member of ASB. She plans to study psychology and law at Brigham Young University, the Hawaii campus. She sees this experience as a chance to interact with students with similar ambitions and goals as hers, and is proud to be a representative of Garden Grove. It is obvious, Council, that this year's students are a very outstanding group. They are motivated, civic-minded, and outgoing scholars. The City of Garden Grove is proud to have such superb diplomats represent the city in Annyang, Korea. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present each of you with a filled City of Garden Grove tote bag and wish you a safe and memorable trip to Annyang, South Korea. Congratulations.
Won't you please come over here? We have a bag, a tote bag, for every one of you. It's got some stuff in it that might give a trade for Korean stuff. Let's get over here. We're gonna get our picture taken in a minute, so. Are you two going to Korea? You all got your bags?
Cover me, Alex. You good?
I'm good.
One, two, three. One. One, two, three.
Would any of you like to say something? Maybe the comedian that wants to be a space traveler? Or that girl that wants to do chemistry and sociology, too? That was interesting.
Hello, alright. So on behalf of the students traveling to Annyang, South Korea, I'd like to thank the board for their gifts, and I'd like to say thank you for this wonderful opportunity and to ensure that we will be sure to guide, be sure to represent Garden Grove on its best terms. Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll go to oral communications. I guess we just have the one agency tonight, the Garden Grove City Council, correct?
No, there's a few more.
We have the sanitary district and the successor agency, as well as the city council tonight.
Is somebody hiding those agendas from me? They're not in my— I just took it for granted, we weren't doing it. It's a successor in the sanitation district, right? Okay, at this time, we'll open up oral communications for the successor agency and the sanitary district at the same time. We have Amelia Ramos. Could we get rid of that piano music if we could?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for giving me the permission to be here. It's an honor to be here and to represent the community parents. My name is Amelia Ramos, and I'm a Garden Grove citizen, Garden Grove resident for over 20 years. I am what they consider the Orange County as a—I say this humbly—with Champion Mom and—as well as California. I'm very active on different areas in our community. This year, I have the honor to have the—sorry, little bit nervous, just a little bit. Okay, I have the honor to be part of the Ten Commandments for Parents on the Garden Grove School District as well. I've been doing that for a couple of years already, and 40 fundamental assets to help my community to understand a little bit more about the Garden Grove system. And I'm part of the coalition, the Garden Grove Drugs-Free Coalition, as a parent and community member. And I have three kids that go here in Garden Grove. Nathan, 12, Matthew, 9, and Gabby, 12—I mean, excuse me, 6. And they are my motivation, but I love to work for my community. I love Garden Grove. And the reason why I'm here is because—may I? Thank you, because I was trying to reach—that gave me nervous. A community assessment of problems in the city, complete by the coalition in 2011, tell us that the bigger substance abuse problem amongst youth in the city is teens drinking alcohol. Community leaders who participate in kid informant interviews and parents and youth in focus groups reveals that alcohol is easily available through commercial searches and adult parents who host drink parties for teens where alcohol is served. Parents who do this think that drinking is a rite of passage, and that drinking is just something teens do as they make their way towards adulthood. They also think it is safer for them to drink at home than do it outside, so they even host parties for them. That's why the coalition is starting a reality party for parents housed third in April 27. Please, everybody write it. April 27, a Garden Grove resident of Formal Community Service Project Health Educator. Participating parents and community leaders will turn a home set up to portray a teen drinking party with youth actors exposing underage and drinking practice at games. We have now 75 parents who have signed up to join five hours housed third starting at 2:00 PM. A couple of you have already signed, and thank you for that. Most parents unfortunately lack of knowledge of the consequence of providing alcohol to minors. Later research showed that the human brain continued to develop into age of 25, and that alcohol consumption can alter and retard that growth and can cause learning problems. Also, children who begin drinking before the age of 15 are five times more likely to develop problems with alcohol than those who start after 21. The passage of social host ordinance in Garden Grove will provide law enforcement with a powerful tool to control teens drinking parties. An evaluation and the effectiveness of host ordinance passed in Ventura County showed that three out of five police officers agree that the ordinance is an effective tool to reduce underage drinking parties. Over 90% of the officers reported there have been no negative impact resulting for the SHOs. The percentage of the hosts receiving citations for large parties with over 50 attending has also decreased. That's why I invite everybody of you, you and the ones that are sitting behind me, to please join us on this tour on April 27. I'm read, but I'm speaking from my heart, really. I would like for you guys to come and join other parents and other leaders of the community. Thank you for your time, and I apologize for any mistake I made.
Thank you. You can clap for her.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Narelle Thompson. I'm speaking on behalf of concerned parents from Pacifica, including the parent whose child got run over on his way to school last month. We've been monitoring that junction, and there is a big problem on Lamson and Lamp Lighter. If I could pass the—I made a map, so you can understand what I'm talking about. On where the part that says "A" in the little balloon, that's where the junction, and that's where all the accidents are happening. I have called two years ago and spoke to Mr. Candelaria regarding this, and he did say that there was a budget that was approved, and it was gonna be—the traffic light was gonna be corrected, so nobody can make U-turns, but that didn't happen last year. And my concern is that the reason how the kids are getting hit is—it's only a two-lane street, and it's—obviously, you cannot really make a U-turn on that one without hitting the kids on the curb. And sometimes, the cars are trying to beat the yellow light. They're making a big—they're not even—they're moving right in the front, so kids that think that they have a right of way are starting to cross the street, not knowing that this car is really not making a left turn on Lamp Lighter. They're actually making a U-turn because it's a truck sometimes. And that is a really, really big concern on us. We had called the Garden Grove Police Department for help, monitoring that junction, and we have not gotten any help. We would love to have our children safe when they're crossing the street. Even my two kids that goes to Pacifica are scared to cross that street because of that. And another thing that I wanted to bring up is the lack of the 25-mile sign from Valley View to going towards Knott. That's why in between, there is 40-mile speed limit. These cars are going 40, 50 miles an hour in the morning and in the afternoon when kids are walking to school, especially on Toll Pass where Barker Elementary School is. A lot of kids go down that way, and there are a lot of, you know, big concerns of cars speeding. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, you got anything you want to add on that?
I'll make sure that the traffic unit is aware of the complaints, and we'll certainly be out there to monitor it, also along with the—we have a school officer assigned to Pacifica High School, and so we'll get on it tomorrow morning.
Let's take a look and see whether the traffic commission can decide whether they'd like to put a 25 mile an hour sign up there, too.
No question, Mayor. We've got an item on our agenda later that's talking about Chapman Avenue and Lamp Lighter. So is that different, or is it a typo that—
6A?
Yeah, 6A is talking about a traffic commission recommendation regarding Chapman Avenue and Lamp Lighter.
That's true, but if she's gonna speak—
Different item.
If she's gonna speak about it now, she has to speak now.
But she was talking about Lamson and Lamp Lighter.
Mr. Mayor, Public Works Director Bill Murray's here. He may be able to—
Yes, we're gonna be dealing with that particular intersection with that item, 6A. I believe, or 7A, I'm sorry. At Lamson and— Uh-huh. It's one of the modifications where we're going to be fixing that, or at least helping that situation there. Is there Chapman and Lamp Lighter on the agenda? There's Chapman—let me pull—pulled all that up. I've got Chapman and Springdale, there's Garden Grove and Partridge, Lamson and Lamp Lighter, we're adding left turn phasing there, and Brookhurst and Lamson. Okay.
Hi, my name's Beverly Walsh. I've been living in the community for 18 years. I have a son who goes Pacifica, and my concern is, as well as Narelle's, with the traffic along Lamson. There was an accident last month, and it was, you know, going through a red light. I've sat there and monitored it three times in the last couple of weeks, and I have called the Garden Grove Police Traffic Department and had no response, asking them to come and, you know, monitor it with me, but nobody's called me back. I do see that it is on the agenda to make it a priority, and, you know, how many more accidents does it take before it does become a priority, and we get something done on this? And also, on 7B, there's a bid gone out for contractors, and so that's also a concern. There's four—in that bid, there's four different areas of Garden Grove, and I noticed that Lamson and Lamp Lighter is number three. Does that mean that it's number three on the priority, or is that just how it's been written?
It's just how it's been listed.
Lamp Lighter and Lamson needs to be a number-one priority. And then, I know Chapman—I live Chapman and Springdale. There was an accident there as well, less than two weeks ago. So Chapman— So Chapman and Springdale also needs to be locked up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Really quick, from what I can see, it's one bid that went out that covers all those different locations. So it's one contractor bidding on doing, doing the work for all four, so.
So when you prioritize them, how do we know, does it take, you know, do we have number one as priority done this month?
Why don't you, why don't you have a seat and stick around, let us talk about it, okay? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council staff, residents. I'm here speaking once again on behalf of the Vietnam War Museum of America Foundation. I just wanna thank the three speakers that did our lecture series that was sponsored by the Union of Vietnamese Student Association. They did a wonderful job endorsing that, and if you didn't catch one of these, our speaker series will return in the fall. But Jose Ramos, the founder of Vietnam Veterans Day in the United States, and Garden Grove being the first in Orange County to endorse such a holiday, and California being the first state in the nation to endorse this holiday. Vietnam Veterans Day is March thirtieth, that's this Saturday, so if you know people that had served in this conflict, it is a constant reminder, this war is not over. There's sixteen hundred and sixty-six MIA still missing in action in Vietnam. And just this week, those three speakers, Jose Ramos, Judge Eileen Moore from the California Fourth Court of Appeals, and Franz Wanda Roke, who was a helicopter pilot in Vietnam, gave their ringing stories, their heart-wrenching stories of their service in Vietnam. But this week marks a major anniversary, and the Arizona Republic carried an editorial that was op-edited in the Wall Street Journal this week. This is the fortieth anniversary of the release of John McCain, two thousand and eight Republican nominee for President of the United States, along with one hundred and seven other American prisoners from the infamous Vietnamese prison known as the Hanoi Hilton. And he reflected on this anniversary. He said that, "I reflected on the friendships forged with fellow prisoners and Vietnamese people, and my high hopes for human rights improvements by the Vietnamese Communist government." He said, "I've made many friends with people who were once my enemies. I've become fond of a place I once detested." And he talked about the great American values of freedom, human rights, rule of law, and dignity. Forty years later today, Vietnam still imprisons and mistreats dissidents, journalists, bloggers, ethnic minorities, and persecutes religious minorities as well, for whatever political reasons that they gain from this. And Vietnam is just one of many places in the world where freedom is still a hard-fought battle. So this week, let's, let's keep thinking of, of our soldiers overseas and help support this museum to tell this story of, of the migration of the Vietnamese people to America and the homeland they left behind, and the soldiers that fought and died there. And we veterans have dedicated to make our lives long so that we can serve our country. And so that great flag that sits behind the mayor up there is one of the greatest, is the greatest flag in the world. So please support our endeavors and keep tuning into the city website for the exciting details of the architectural designs and, and the project that's moving forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Alex Mohammed.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilman. I actually wanted to speak about the tow contract. We spoke about this a few city council member, a few city council meetings ago. I put together a little research that I had done. It's just basically, we talked about the tow parameters, extending it to three miles. Staff was absolutely correct with the, extending it allowed too many tow companies to apply, and thus there was a lot of work. And so I did a little research into it, and I was at that time asking to extend it to three miles, and when I figured out that extending it to two point five lessens that, that field, and then actually extending it to two point five only allows three more companies to, to apply, and that would be a lot less work for the staff. So I put together some research that I would like for you guys to consider and read, and if I can leave that for you. It basically just talks about some of the, the benefits of extending the parameters and what our companies can contribute to the city. So I'm gonna keep it real simple, that's pretty much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. We have a, a problem with our convention center, which is our neighbor, West Street and Ricky Lane, basically, or bounded by Catella and Orange Wood. It's been going on for quite a while, and it has been really hard to get anything done on it. City of Anaheim took complete charge of it and said that we will issue citations on it, we will post it, no convention center parking, resident parking by permit only. They've dropped the ball on it way more than one time. We had a large meeting about a year ago at a local school, where about a hundred and fifty people showed up from the area complaining about the issue. And at that point, Mr. Park from City of Anaheim said they're gonna issue permits for residents, and they would patrol the streets with Anaheim Police and would cite people for the infraction. That has not happened. It's completely backpedaled on it. They've, they've turned it over to Garden Grove. I don't know if they've told Garden Grove that yet, but they've divested themselves completely of the program and thrown it all to Garden Grove Police Department. The problem that is, on some of the busier convention center days, when there's seventy, eighty, ninety thousand people going to a particular convention, we have no parking on our street. We can't park in front of our own houses. Sometimes our driveways get blocked, we can't return back home again. It's really, really bad. Anaheim had signs that were pretty aggressive, they're the ones, same ones they have over one street over, which is the City of Anaheim property, which actually threatens with towing or citation if they're parked there, and it's a nice red sign that says, "No parking on this street, resident parking only by permit," and they don't have any problem anymore. Ours were watered down, those signs were taken down by the City of Garden Grove for some unknown reason, replaced with resident parking only, period. Nothing mentioned about police patrol or citations may be issued or anything else. And since then, it's gotten worse. We have one of the largest conventions coming up this weekend. It's Comic Con or something like that, it's gonna be sixty, seventy thousand people showing up. And I guarantee you, I've taken pictures in the last couple of months of the bigger situations we have with the convention center, there's no parking on our street. There's up to sixty cars parked on the street that do not belong to residents. Mr. Park had a residential sign that he put on the back of each car that would say, "We're okay to park there." That program was dropped completely. He sent us notices about a month ago saying, "We're gonna reissue them, but it's gonna cost each resident thirty dollars for each car." And I wrote him back, and I said, "That's inappropriate, why would you do that?" "Oh, I made a mistake, I didn't proofread that properly, it's actually not gonna cost you guys anything." I said, "Well, your flyers you sent out to all residents in the area says it's gonna cost us money. And are you gonna put signs back up?" "Oh, no, it's not our responsibility anymore." "Really? You promised in that meeting that we had with all those people that you were gonna take care of the whole situation, we go, you're our go-to guy, so how come we're not getting that anymore?" Well, we just turned it over to Garden Grove Police Department. Did you tell them about it? I called them up and say, "Hey, we have a problem on our street today." The dispatcher will tell me, "No, no, we, we don't do that anymore." I go, "No, you guys do, I was told by your city manager that you guys now do it." And they'll send like one police officer out, last week they spent one officer out, drove up and down the street and left. When he came back a little bit later, to his credit, I did point out a car that the lady had been sitting there for five or six hours, and I even pointed out the sign to her, and she go, "Oh, well, whatever, it's still cheaper than, you know, paying parking fees over the convention center." He actually cited her, which was really very rewarding, but only one car out of sixty. So I wrote up.
You live in Garden Grove or you live in Anaheim?
Yes, it's Garden Grove. Ricky Street is Garden Grove.
Remember, like Ricky and Eleanor and.
Yeah.
Jacqueline.
It's just Ricky, and it's West Street itself that has the signs posted on it. The other streets, I think Wakefield right behind us is the City of Anaheim. They have really cool signs. I mean, they're red, they're, they're blaring, they tell you, "Don't park on this, don't dare park on it, we will tow you, or we'll issue citation." And the lady that was over there used to organize the events for us to meet and complain about this, she doesn't have to do anymore because her street is clear of cars on the convention center days. But we still are kinda hung out the dry, we just, you know. And I made some suggestions, I have, I have, I did type this up, and it gives a more of an explanation. You guys might be able to review it later on and get with Anaheim and see what the, what they're doing that's right. You guys were kinda dumped, like I said, was dumped in your laps, you don't really have any idea that, of what they do over there. But it is really frustrating, very frustrating for us. We were suggesting maybe sawhorses at each end of the street, saying this is a resident-only parking area, or even the signs to be changed with something with more teeth in it than what we have right now.
Have you got pictures of Anaheim signs in here?
Uh, no, I did, I noted today, I drove down the street, I copied down what their signs actually say. It's a red line sign that says, "Permit parking" in large letters, "Residents only," small letters underneath that. Towway zone has municipal code, and also the Anaheim Police Department phone number.
Okay, we'll take a look and see what we can do for you.
I appreciate it. It's really tough.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. If you're a senior resident of Garden Grove, and you're in your later years, and you have difficulty doing things for yourself, maybe you're living alone, and the most menial tasks become almost impossible, like changing a light bulb, or doing miscellaneous things around the home, what is the solution? Well, there is a group that is trying to get organized in Garden Grove, and this is called the Village. And what this organization is trying to accomplish is to set up a program where if an individual is in a position where they can't do small things for themselves, there is someone they can call, who maybe for a small fee, will come over to their home and take care of these small tasks to make their life more reasonable. Now, as a get-together to try to promote this village concept, we're having an event here tomorrow at one-thirty in the Constitution Room, which is right down the hall. This is going to be a showing of the movie, The King and I. So the public is invited to come at one-thirty, refreshments will be served, it's an opportunity to find out what the village is about, and enjoy a first-rate movie, and get to know what people in Garden Grove are trying to put together to help these residents that just need a little helping hand now and then. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles was the last speaker, anybody else wanna say anything? Hearing none at this time, we will recess the city council, and we'll go to the successor
Thank you, Mayor. Please call the March twenty-sixth meeting of the successor agency to order.
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Member Fan?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
Chair Jones?
Consent items, we just have the warrants. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Uh, no public hearings, no items. Any matters from agency members?
No.
Seeing none, we adjourn.
At this time, we'll convene the sanitary district.
Madam clerk, please call a roll.
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Vice President Beard?
Here.
President Fan?
Here. Or, communications, we're done with that. Consent items, the minutes from February twenty-sixth.
Move approval.
No public hearings, items for consideration, none.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Sir, Madam Clerk. And I guess we adjourn, our next meeting will be on April twenty-third, six-thirty. Back to city council.
At this time, we'll reconvene the city council, and we'll go to three A, request on the Boy Scouts.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a written request from Boy Scout Troop eleven oh three for cosponsorship of the Twelfth Annual Cub Scout Pushcart Derby on Sunday, October twentieth, twenty thirteen.
Move to approve. Motion received, five yes votes.
What was the date that was gonna be on?
October twenty.
That's way late, isn't it?
It was normally in April.
April, I think, maybe there's the school, something to do with the school, I heard.
I'm not sure.
If you have a question, yeah, it's typically in April.
Maybe they're building something at school or.
Yeah, I think they're refurbishing the school. That's what I heard.
Sunday, October twenty.
It's a great event, by the way. It's very worthwhile, very fun.
Okay, let's go to consent items.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, call for the vote.
Councilmember Jones? Motion received, five yes votes.
Six A?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a Traffic Commission recommendation to add the Chapman Avenue and Lamp lighter Street intersection to the city's traffic signal priority list, and I'd like to ask Bill Emery to present the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Emerys. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Earlier this month, the Traffic Commission met and discussed a petition sent to the city requesting a traffic signal be constructed at the intersection of Chapman and Lamp lighter. The petition cited safety issues with the neighboring schools, Patton Elementary and Chapman Intermediate. Staff conducted a warrant study and found the intersection meant four of the nine traffic warrants for signal, and recommended that the intersection be placed on the signal priority list. The commission approved this addition to the priority list, and should the council approve the Traffic Commission's recommendation tonight, the intersection will be added to the list. This concludes staff's report.
Need a motion to make that, or?
Move to approve.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Jones? Motion received, five yes votes.
Let me ask you about the intersection there at, well, we just take a look at that, Lamp lighter and Lamson. Have we been out there on top of that at all, or?
Yes, we're, we're actually, that project was on our previous priority list for traffic signal improvements, and we're gonna go, we're gonna go out there and upgrade that signal, including the left turn phasing, and with new signs and street markings.
Okay, what about a sign for, that says, "Slow down to twenty-five miles per hour when you're passing"?
I can, you know, our speed limit signs are regulated by the state vehicle code. I can have our, our traffic section look into what we can lower the speed down to. To a speed study.
Just a comment, whatever we can do to enhance that over there, I think enforcement's the biggest thing, Lamp lighter, I go by there every day. In fact, Mr. Walsh, I saw you out there, going by, I dropped my son off at that same location. I think the problems intensify with all the work going on with the median project, which will be done in, what, June?
Hopefully.
Yeah, well, think positive, but that does intensify the situation. But whatever we can do to enhance it, I think enforcement is the biggest thing right now. Any physical limitations or directions we can do, a signage or lighting will help. Also, working with the school district and the students themselves, they have a sense they'd cross over, and they're not watching or being attentive, so it's, it's all working together to improve the situation, but it's intense right now, I'll admit that. And it will get better with these certain things, but we have to get on it right away, and it's.
I do have a question. If, if it's a two-lane traffic, surely the street should be doing the same speed on either side when you're traveling east and west?
Well, I don't know if that's necessary, but it's certainly necessary if going in is near a school, it's the same speed both ways.
Okay, so it's not happening on Lamson? Because if you're traveling west on Lamson, it's saying, "Reduce speed to twenty-five when children are present," but if you come in the other way, you can travel at forty in that same area.
Okay, give us a, first of all, Susan, look into, see if we can have a, a police officer out there at the time. officer out there at the time, most-
I believe the police chief said earlier that you would have someone out tomorrow to take a look at that, to check the speeds and the safety and work with the school officer.
Yeah, I'd like to see, you know, maybe a motor out there.
Okay, we'll look into that for sure.
Stick around, we'll talk to you after the meeting, okay? Items for consideration, 7A.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have an award of contract to Kava Pipeline for Project Number 7399, Trask Avenue and Lily Street Water Improvement Project, and again, I'd like to ask Bill Murray to present the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Emerys. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, council is being asked to award a contract to Connaud Pipeline Corporation for the construction of almost 3,500 feet of new water line that traverses its way up from Lily Street, Trask to Gloria, and then proceeding in Gloria to Ranchero Way, and finally continuing along Downey to Fairview. Your staff report has a location map for your reference. The new 12-inch water line will increase fire flow rates in the area at a cost of Staff received and opened 12 bids on February 20th of this year and determined that Connaud Pipeline Corporation was the lowest responsible bidder. Should the council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin work in May and should be complete in August of this year. This project was included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for with water funds. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Entertained a motion?
Move to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
7D.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have an award of contract to PTM General Engineering Services for Project Number 7125, Traffic Signal Installation, and Bill Murray will be presenting the staff report.
Thank you again, Ms. Emerys. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, the council is being asked to award a contract to PTM General Engineering Services Corporation for the construction of a new traffic signal at Garden Grove Boulevard and Partridge Street and three traffic signal modifications at Chapman and Springdale, Lamson and Lamp lighter, and Brookhurst and Lamson. These improvements will improve traffic safety at the subject intersections at a cost of just over $550,000. Staff received and opened nine bids on March 13th of this year and determined that PTM General Engineering Services Corporation was the lowest responsible bidder. Should the council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin work in April and should be complete in May of this year. This project was included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for with a state safe routes to school grant and Measure M2 funds. This concludes staff's report.
Any questions for staff?
Yeah, can you comment on the nature of the modifications on the ones that are existing?
The primary modification is to add left turn phasing. Right now, the traffic signal there just flashes green so that you're not precluded or have a protected left with its own left arrow. That's the major improvement that's going on there. There'll also be, you know, new signs and striping and what have you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion?
Move to approve the award.
No motion?
Second.
Second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Mr. Beard?
Oh, items? I just also want to comment on the Speaker's Bureau is very informative, very touching. Speaker Jose Ramos and as Mr. Mitchell had mentioned, or Mr. Katz had talked about, he is the one that brought a Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day to the, pretty much to the nation and to the state, and Garden Grove was the first city to recognize it as well. So, I want to bring that out. And like I say, very touching. I look forward to the other series. Enjoyed all the speakers, is very informative, very educational, very worthwhile, and I commend the efforts of all who are involved in putting on the Speaker's Bureau, which continues success to our members on the Museum Committee Commission for all your work. And we're going to get there, and it's so worthwhile. I want to bring up the social host ordinance. I think we should pursue this as a city. I'm bringing it up now. I will be attending the April 27th party or the teen demonstration exercises going on. I've read about it in other cities, their ordinances. I think it is very worthwhile. I think it brings accountability and responsibility to the adults who may be hosting these parties, who have awareness and control over those situations. And so I think it's a great social issue if we could save a drunk driving situation. But it's beyond that, too. There's all things associated with drinking alcohol for young people, even in a social setting by parents who may allow it. I'm not advocating it for now. I think we as a city should pursue looking into it. And after this meeting or this event, I hope to pursue it even more, and if it takes a task committee or a subcommittee of the council, anybody who's interested, I want to be a part of that. I think it's worthwhile. I think it's worth looking into. I think we need the input from the police department and parents and organizations. So, I think on the surface, it looks very worthwhile, and I don't think it has any downsides to it, really, but it brings social responsibility to those adults who may have control over the situation. So, down the road, and I think it will happen in this city. It happens, it's happened in six other cities. We should study and review what's going on with those cities and see if it could work here. From what I've seen and read, I think it can work, and I think it's very important. So, again, if we ever have a committee of council members who express an interest in pursuing this, I want to be a part of that as well. Also, too, I wanted to bring up, good luck to the Cub Scouts on October. If you're in the west end of Garden Grove and you're available that day, you want to see a great community event, that's one of them. It's so reflective of scouting, and it's reflective of how our city works and helps with the organizations to put on a fun, meaningful event for them. It's been going on for 12 years. I like to comment on it because I was a part of it 12 years ago when George Brodygum, our scout master at the time, came up with this crazy idea of rolling down a hill in West Garden Grove, and it made it happen with a lot of support from the scouts, their parents and such. So, very worthwhile, very fun, and it's all, and that's what Garden Grove's about. Talk about a family-oriented event, that's it. With that, I got information tonight that I want to pass on to the city manager's office about potential funding for economic development through our new congressman, Alan Lohenthal. So, it's a grant. I don't have all the details, but it just passed along to me today. Maybe it could have something to do with our economic development along the Harbor Corridor. So, we want to look at that, and I'll pass it along to staff. And I think that's all I have for now, and that's it. Thanks.
Gina.
Thank you. I just want to remind everyone to buy in Garden Grove. I'm saving up to buy a Hyundai car in Garden Grove. I don't know when that's going to happen, hopefully this year. Also, I want to congratulate Peter again for passing out the news on the speaker for the Vietnam War Museum. You've done a really good job on that. Thank you for your report back today. And as far as the teen drinking hosting, I know that our chief and the city attorney is looking into state laws that are already addressing the issue, and they'll probably be reporting back to us soon, so I'm looking forward to that report for laws that are already in place. A lot of times, law are already in place, we really don't have to create new codes for that, and our police department is already on the alert of those laws and are applying those laws to protect our residents. I don't agree with hosting teens at home, so I do look out for programs or pamphlet or educational events that educate teens on that, and hopefully we can have some of those made up and pass out to our school district, Garden Grove School District. So, maybe I can contact the Garden Grove School District to see if they have anything like that already. And I think a pamphlet passing out to each of the students would be great. And I wanted to say happy birthday to my son Nate. Thank you.
Chris.
Thank you, sir. I just want to say thank you to Mr. Charles Mitchell for inviting me out to the American Legion Post 55 Pot 5 this past weekend for their anniversary. It was wonderful to see all of our vets from the Vietnam War there. I was able to talk with them to thank them for their service to our country and helping our Vietnamese-Americans to be here. Soon thereafter, though, I went with the mayor to an Eagle Scout award session, which is so endearing to see the two diverse generations but striving for the same thing, which is service to our community. As I mentioned, that when I was over at the Boy Scouts, I mean, at the Eagle Scouts meeting, I met a young man by the name of Kenny. He's actually in the audience right now. And Kenny came up to me and he said, "What's the biggest problem facing Garden Grove?" And of course, me being a politician, I was trying to think of all the things I could have said that would have made it sound right. I got a call from Kenny that evening, late at night, and he's like, "Hey, this is Kenny. I have an idea for you to improve Garden Grove." I said, "What is it?" He said, "Make Garden Grove cleaner." And I'm like, you know, "That's a pretty good idea." So, I'm hoping to work with Kenny here to try to make Garden Grove cleaner. Thanks, Kenny. That's all I have.
Go ahead, Steve.
Just want to commend staff on, our community services staff on putting together a wonderful family event this past weekend at Atlantis Park, the Extravaganza Pre-Easter Event. A lot of egg hunts for kids of all ages, and it was just really well-coordinated, well put together, and well-attended, so good job, and happy Easter to everyone coming up next week.
I went to the egg hunt also, and the first thing I noticed about it was a sign outside said, "Sold out." I mean, I cannot believe that so many people bought into that. It was really good, the kids were having a ball. It was just fun, fun to just sit back and watch it. And another event I went to was the art show that was put on by the school district. They had their art show in the, I'm having a senior moment. Anyway, they had an art show, and it was fantastic. The kids did beautiful work, they gave out probably 300 or 400 ribbons, and all the high schools and I guess it went from the 7th grade up, or maybe even lower than that, but it was, it was good. It was great. They had probably 10 walls the size of that wall over there, just coated with pictures. I had some that they sent to me, and they were supposed to be here this evening, and I was going to show off a little bit of what the art I really liked there that they had, but somehow that didn't work out, so we'll bring them back next time. I want to thank everybody that's here, that's involved in our city, that is concerned about problems that we have. We're going to try to fix everything to, at least try to solve problems for people if we can, and we'll do our best to do that. At this time, I will recess the Garden Grove City Council meeting until April 9th, 2013, at 5:30 PM.
How are you?
This is Gina Nguyen with a Garden Grove TV3 News Report. The Buena Clinton Youth and Family Center held an event called Buena Clinton Goes to College to teach parents and students about how to get into and pay for college. There, an educator for the family workshops, Tony Orozco, talked about the importance of working hard and getting good grades to achieve happiness.
Discovering what their talents are in order for them to pursue what they want in life. I want to motivate them.
Orozco inspired the students to form goals for their future.
They can achieve anything, but they have, they have to have structure, tips that they can acquire so they can make it to university, something, for example, priorities like education, their health, family.
He said to find passion in your career, and that's exactly what I plan to do because I like video games and I really want to be able to make the video games for the passing generation.
The youth center is located in a part of Garden Grove with a troubled past, but the neighborhood has come a long way in the past few years. The facility has helped over 2,000 youths by offering programs like this to help them improve and keep them out of trouble. The center includes homework clubs, summer day camp, and volunteer opportunities that will help students get better grades in school and earn service hours for college applications. Not only does College Day help students, it also teaches parents how to promote education within the homes.
It's important to bring awareness to our community because many people don't know how to get into college or what to do. It's better through education that they learn and know for themselves.
I had to apply for a lot of scholarships and I got a lot of financial aid, everything from diversity scholarships.
The event included a panel of former students from the center who went to college and came back to share their experiences about applying to schools and scholarships. The Buena Clinton Youth and Family Center is steering the youth toward a brighter future, hopefully a future that includes college.